Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to a special meeting of the City Council in the city of Delray Oaks, Tuesday, March 13th at 6 o'clock. I'd like to thank everybody for showing up here. It's been a really neat evening. I didn't realize we had a dog park on the agenda, though. So, anything else? Go ahead, please.
Councilor McLeish, there. Councilor Michelle Hare. Councilor Ollie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clark.
Here.
Mayor Edelman.
Here. Thank you, Jim. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. We have an equipment purchase, authorized purchase of a skip loader, tractor, and wood chipper for total expenditure of up to, not exceeding, $64,000. All costs reimbursed using floor and caretaker funds per fiscal year 2017-2018 budget negotiations. Our city manager, Pino Pick, has an announcement to make as regard to this high-level consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief comment. Between the time we wrote the agenda report and the council meeting, our Public Works contract employee, Ron Fuji, was able to find a better tractor with more accessories, which is pictured here, for $12,900 plus.
Believe it or not, we have a city employee somewhere in government in the entire U.S. that's actually able to go out and try and save money for the government and get a better funding at half the price. This happens here. Ron, thank you. That's real professional. Thank you very much. Any questions by members of the council regarding this consent agenda? Saying none after the public, any questions? Back to the council, I would ask for a motion.
No legislative.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the equipment purchase on the paperwork by the state. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion heard and answered. Okay, next we go to our regular agenda. Our next item is our regular agenda item, which consists of a study session, which we're here right now for a 17-acre site. Our staff's recommended action for this study session is to, one, hold a public workshop to discuss two proposals for the 17-acre site, and, two, direct staff regarding the next steps with regard to the process. It's important to note, this has been the first step in a very detailed process, which will be outlined by Aaron very shortly. I think it's also important to note that this study session is not required by law. Your city council scheduled the study session with the express intent to provide our residents and others with a maximum opportunity to provide their views as to proposed developments. Everyone here will have the opportunity to express their views during the study session. No decision will be made this evening. I repeat, no decision will be made this evening. You might call our study session this evening a fact-binding exercise. I will conduct this public workshop as follows. First, we will hear a presentation from Erin Harway of Denise Duffy Associates on the development process. She's an expert on the process. She will explain the steps we have to go through considering any development on that 17-acre site. At the conclusion of her presentation, city council members will ask questions, followed by questions from the public. So after her presentation, we'll have whatever question we have on the process, and then you all have an opportunity to question what the process is all about. That's what will be following over the next couple of months or so. Next, Mr. Orozco will make a presentation as to his proposed project. At the conclusion of his presentation, council members will ask questions, followed by questions and comments from the public. So after the first presentation, the adult presentation, Mr. Orozco's, will ask questions. They will go out to you. You ask questions, and you make comments, any comments you want to make. Okay? Next, Mr. Donaldson will make his presentation as to the proposed project. At the conclusion of this presentation, council members will ask questions, followed by questions and comments from the public. At the conclusion of both presentations, and questions and comments from you, the public. Your city council will discuss the two projects, ask any final questions, and provide guidance to city staff. The city council comments this evening and questions should focus on the presentation this evening, not the other consulting materials. I will now turn this process over to Mr. Pino Pick, our city manager, ex-oral mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, as you know, the city acquired the 17.7-acre parcel in 2000 at no cost to the city, and there have been two wells drilled on the property with limited positive results. The parcel is zone C1V, or neighborhood commercial with visitor overlay. The city received an unsolicited proposal in October of 2017. After closed session discussion, council directed staff to market the proposal to the property, rather, and assess interest and determine various development options, including consideration of the potential use of part of the parcel as parkland or for environmental mitigation. Staff published an RFP in February of 2018 and received two responses, which you will hear tonight, one from the Orozco Group and one from Scott Donaldson. In response to public comment at the previous city council meeting, we've also invited our on-call planning staff, Erin Harway, to walk us through the development process to educate staff, the council, and the public on exactly how the process will work, and to answer any questions the council and the public may have. So with that, I'd like to introduce Erin Harway to give her presentation.
Thank you, Marianne Ollie, city manager, county manager of the council. Please pardon my voice. I am getting a little cold. Actually, cold's got the cough will not go away, so I'm energized. I am Erin Harway of Denise Duffy Associates. I am a senior planner, project manager, and environmental scientist. So I do wear a lot of hats and been with DNA for almost 18 years, so I will humbly accept that expert. Thank you, Erin. So tonight we'll walk through an overview of the project development process. Just a heads up that there is a lot of information on these slides, and that these slides will be available electronically from the city's website, and so I don't want you to feel like you're furiously taking notes. So we're going to start with the RFP-RQ process. RFP in first stands for request for proposal, while RFQ stands for request for qualifications. And that process culminates with developer selection. That then brings on the plan process, which is initiated with the application submitted by the selected developer. The CEQA process is then initiated to ensure compliance with local, state, and federal environmental regulations. After those processes are pretty much complete, the building process is initiated to support the construction phase of the project. And throughout these processes, there are opportunities for public participation, and we'll cover those as well. So the RFP-RQ process begins with receiving unsolicited proposal, as the city manager discussed, or preparing and distributing an RFP-RQ, or as the case were tonight. Typically, there is planning commission and/or city council input. Again, tonight's meeting, we're getting input from the city council and the public on these responses to proposals, request for proposals. So the city will then review the submissions and assemble a selection committee and establish selection criteria. They will move forward with developer selection and enter into development agreements, which may look like an exclusive negotiating agreement, a purchase and sale, or a ground lease. And at the end of that process, the planning and CEQA processes are initiated. So once the developer is selected, the developer will submit the project plans, application and fees, and the city will initiate their plan review. They will determine what required permits are necessary, how many, what kind. They will review the application for completeness, which has a 30-day timeline. The city has the opportunity to request additional information and extend that timeline if needed. Once the application is deemed complete, the city and the developer, the applicant, will initiate the due diligence phase, which consists of environmental review and technical studies, and community workshops, and design charrettes. The planning process culminates with public hearings, and that might be the planning commission or the city council. I'm not sure how many are familiar with CEQA. That's the California Environmental Quality Act. That's initiated. The purpose of CEQA is to inform the public and the decision-makers of the potential environmental impacts of a proposed project. So once the city receives the application, it will review the project and determine the level of CEQA documentation required. If a project does not have the potential to affect a physical environment and does not have discretionary action associated with it, it is not a project under CEQA. But typically, as you see around here, development projects are subject to CEQA. And you can have three levels of environmental review. The project can be deemed exempt, either subjectorily or categorically. The project can go through the initial study, which can culminate in a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration, or it can go through a more thorough environmental impact report. So once that level of documentation is determined, the technical studies are identified, the analyses are conducted. There is early coordination with the public and early coordination with responsible agencies. Responsible agencies are those with permitting or criminal authorities over the project, in addition to the lead agency, which is the city. Then the technical analyses are compiled and summarized in a public review document. It's prepared and distributed for either 30 days or 45 days, depending on the level of review. The public has an opportunity to review the document, submit comments to the city, and then the city is required to review and respond to public comments. The final, the draft document is finalized, and it's sent to city, a planning commission, or council for final approval of the document and project. So the building permit process typically starts when the planning and CEQA phases are ending. And it generally, they're generally associated with administrative and then serial permits, basically over the camera. There's not much public input at this time, due to all the focus is pretty much on the front end of planning and CEQA processes. These are stamping on the plans, basically, and construction oversight. So the developer will submit the final building and grading plans, the city will do internal plan review, issue the permits, provide construction oversight, and then project goes to completion. So again, a busy slide, I apologize, but this highlights all the wonderful opportunities the public has participated in this process. So first, during the public, or the RFP-RQ process, like tonight, we have the city council meetings, and we have planning commission, law, community workshops, and design charrettes. The planning process will consist of the same. Then you have the CEQA process. Again, if you have initial study, med-deaf, or mitigated med-deaf versus an EIR, you have different levels of environmental, or different levels of public review. With the initial study, you have a public comment period that lasts 30 days. With the EIR, there's some initial steps on the front end. You have a notice of preparation, where you inform the public that you are going to prepare for the EIR, and you send out this notice of preparation, and it has a 30-day review period in which the city will solicit comments from the public and responsible agencies on what should be analyzed or scoped in the analysis for the project. And based on those comments and a number of other things, the draft document is prepared and goes out for public review for 45 days, and then there is a public hearing during the EIR period, if the city so wishes, if it's not always required. And at the end, there are final public project approval periods, which you have the opportunity to attend a comment. So that's planning 101. And I hope to give you any questions.
Erin, thank you very much. Outstanding job as usual. Any questions from the councilperson? Any questions? Yes.
Erin, when you were describing this, you did leave out, I think, one of the options, maybe potentially, in that the council has the option not to accept any of these proposals.
That's a good point. That way they talk about the progress.
Any questions about members of the council?
And as we went through this, we were talking about the developers. I believe in the last time this was considered, the Parks District was involved as well, either through a requirement or their request of just, is there a reason that, or were they engaged in this process, and is that included?
Yes, we're the city manager, explain.
Yeah, we reached out to the Parks District, and there was no interest in purchasing the land. We re-engaged with them so that we could continue a dialogue, depending on how this process goes forward, just sort of staying in.
And there's no requirement for the city to consider the Parks District as part of the process?
Not that I know of.
Other questions about members of the council? Saying none after the public, any, anyone in the public, you have any questions? Erin, please come forward, I guess, to the podium. That's where we can play your voice for posterity. A hundred years from now, we'll put it down.
It's over.
If you'd say your name and where you're from.
David Ross.
Thank you.
I am, I wanted to ask a question regarding the community workshops. What do they comprise of? Are they definitive, or are they the result of actions given to the council about what the community feels like? Boy, are they structured or are they developed as part of the process?
The latter.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? You have a question, please come to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Allison Carr from Delray Oaks. Can you address the initiative process that go around the CEQA process?
Sure. So that is a unique situation. I don't know the code off the top of my head. Maybe the city attorney might be able to provide that specific code. Voter initiatives are not required to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act. Let me just pull out my notebook. There was a court case a while back that clearly ruled that the city council or supervisors did not, does not need to comply with CEQA prior to adopting a voter-sponsored ballot measure, which is different than a city council or board supervisors ballot measure, which does require CEQA compliance. And I'm not an expert with election code, which is where this ballot initiative measure comes from, but the court basically determined those two laws were not in step, and that you're not required to be CEQA. I think I have some more detail, if you want me to go into it, or maybe we could talk off like.
I would love to go into it publicly. So everyone understands the process?
Okay, I can give an outline. I've got one prepared, if someone wants to. So generally, voter-sponsored initiatives are used by both sides in development controversy, so it's not always used to circumvent the CEQA process, as some say, but it's also used to put land use restrictions and land preservation, the land lifecycle preservation, which is important. As many of you may or may not remember, the Maori Yarras initiatives and referendos were aimed against each other, wanting to, want to move the project forward and want to stop it. So both sides, it's a tool for both sides. So basically, once the process, if the initiative petition is signed by 15% or more of the registered voters of the city, the city council has the option to either place the measure before the voters for approval, approving it at the next city council meeting, or the city council can also order a 30-day report on the measure and take one of those two actions. So that's it in a nutshell, and no CEQA is required. I think a good thing to note, for the RV part, for example, there were environmental conditions and standards required as part of that initiative. There's certain things in the initiative, so they are required through biological and traffic studies. So if an initiative is out and about, and you get one on your doorstep, you might want to check to see if that's included, and maybe not sign it if you feel that that's important.
Thank you. Any other questions by members of the public? Yes, ma'am.
Helen Birdsong, and I live in Delray Oaks. If, what she's just explained to us, if 15% of the voters in Delray Oaks ask for this initiative, would you able to rule it, or would you go with it?
Yeah, I want them to rule it.
So if 15% of the voters come forward and say they want this, the city can't ever rule it?
The options, as I stated, they can either adopt the ordinance without, which is probably exact, but.
Let me move over to our city attorney. I've worked on that.
If I might, I haven't looked at this specifically. I don't know that CEQA, there's an exemption from compliance with CEQA. It could just happen after the initiative. The 15%, if I'm not mistaken, is to qualify, put it on the ballot.
And so when it goes 15% of us, it has to go on the ballot?
Unless the council wants to just go ahead and adopt, adopt, yes.
So that's what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay, so we can get it on the ballot even if the council doesn't put it on?
I'm sorry, if the council doesn't put it on, yes.
We can get it.
Yes, they'll make the decision whether to adopt or place on the ballot.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by members of the public? Yes, sir.
Paul Smart, and just a question about the role of the general plan, kind of before the RFP and before the projects are proposed, so that you don't just get the luge with the project here, project there, being picked off. What role does a general plan play in the community deciding what sorts of projects? So you establish a strategic vision, long-term vision for a community, and what's the best practice for keeping a general plan and a vision current, so that we attract the types of projects that the community is interested in?
That's an excellent question, Carl. I don't have a sort of. I don't know how to make the role of our place with general plan visions right now, but I will say that project is required to be consistent with the general plan, and if it's not, you have to amend the general plan. So project by project, admitting what general plan is typically what cities and other jurisdictions want to do, they want that general plan to be the guiding light, so that they have a holistic view moving forward in the community, spot-changing everything, and get all a little crazy. So I think holistically, that's part of your question, looking at projects in that way, and watching to see how, how they can improve, whether the general plan is being amended, but they are required to be consistent.
Any other questions by members of the public? Yes, ma'am. One light in the apple.
Oh, sorry.
Anybody else? Okay, saying none, bullet comment period's closed. Back to the council. Any other final questions, comments? Saying none. Erin, again, thank you very much. Outstanding presentation. Very much appreciate it. My first and all, Rob, is Mr. Orozco.
Oh, sorry. I did have a question.
Yeah?
Right, maybe we'll find out in the developers, what the developers say. Do either of these require amendment with the general plan for us to move forward?
No. No. Again, Erin, thank you. Mr. Orozco is the first one to read, Mr. Orozco. Mr. Orozco, thank you for showing us this evening.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much, and the audience, thank you very much for being here. I've been in this profession for 41 years, and it's, one of the things that I like about working in small communities is they have a heart, and they show up to these meetings all those reading heart in my heart. It's just, I've got to bend this finger around, so it, but I've been a resident of the Monterey Peninsula for 27 years. Moved here in 1990 from Palm Fresnel. I've worked a lot in very, very small communities over there, bringing them, a lot of times their first shopping center, and that's how I started out. During that period of time, I built, I think, six projects with a street value of a lot of billions of dollars that were small, were not on the truck, on the other channel. But we kind of keep our head down, stay out of the newspapers, and we try to take care of citizens, councils, planning commissions, and whatever. But at the end of the day, there's a project that was viable. Sometimes there is, we don't walk on water, we don't have all the answers, and at this part of the development process, we are with a ton of questions that we have to ask you. When I did Stone Creek, for instance, it came on the table during Target Center in San City. Many of you have been here and remember what San City looked like. It was basically a brownfield site, and that was my first project on the peninsula. And so if I didn't earn my stripes by fire with San City, then I came to Delray Oaks and I got everything I didn't learn, you know, on that, because the Delray Oaks site was a very, very challenging site. It had wetlands, it had, I had to negotiate with the state of California, Caltrans, the approachments, I had TMC to deal with, and like in San City, I had 19 separate agencies I had to deal with. And everyone with agencies right on through to Caltrans had to be satisfied. And it was funny, that was where I learned this motion here, and everybody had their handouts. And so it was, it was kind of like everything I never wanted to know about development in one project. And then come to find out, we had finally got an ultimately a good result here in Delray Oaks, working with a prior mayor, Mayor Hartliss. He was a, he was a character, for sure. My phone doesn't ring at 11 o'clock at night anymore. I've got, check, must not be here. But anyway, we have a company, Orozco Group, sometimes it's called D.O. Development Company. It's comprised of 12 people. My experience in the industry dates 41 years. My two sons, who were, who went to school there locally, local products, went on to Stanford. They've been with me almost 40 years between them. It's hard to believe, but they've actually been in the trenches for 30 years. And I have, this evening, I'd like to point out, Ken Gates, who is a, is one of our major, major architects, and is. My partner, Phil Fortune. And then also, Timothy Westler, who is actually with EMC, who is our environmental planner, and Wesley, as you remember, is a resident of Delray Oaks as well. We're very, very keen on locals, supporting locals, because I've learned over the 26 years of living on the peninsula, 27 years of working on the peninsula, that this peninsula obviously is very unique, has very unique challenges and what have you, and a ton of competitors to develop. It's not a good place to develop, by comparison, say, with Fresno, where I built, I think, 27 shopping centers before I came here. It's, but it's where I live. My family lives here, and my kids live here, and we're all blessed to be here, but we all pay a price for living here. The, I mentioned that we have 12 specialists on our, on our staff. They run, again, in terms of responsibilities for administration, leasing, property management, real estate brokerage. We have a penthouse architect, Matt Nor, in the back, trying to wiggle him. But Matt is also local and has, you know, obviously ties for kids in school. The, we put things really from a local perspective, and I think probably, I'm very, very tough on people who come into the area from out of the area, that think it's easy to develop here, that they can come in and cut corners and not do the IRs and do the things that really protect our environment. It's different, I guess, when you live here. I take it very personally. I'm very, very hard on, on projects that don't make any sense at all, and I'm not very sure to counsel anyone aware of it, saying, what do you got that guy, I mean, what's, how's that guy work? Largely because, like you, I have to live where we did. I drive by, my office is in Ryan Mansion, a quarter mile from here. Ironically, the property that we're talking about tonight, I was the guy that arranged with the prior seller to give it to the city. So I arranged that property to be gifted to the city in and around the year 2000. Talked about the fact, because I said it was just so hard to develop. Nobody delivered development, here I am. So that tells you how smart developers are. The, our attitude, I think, as a company is pretty basic. It's like, we're only as good as the last project that we did. We've done 60 projects, and done a lot of really tough projects, but nobody wants to hear that. That's yesterday's business. What they're really interested in, what we're all here for tonight, is to really kind of find out what the potential is, good or bad, for that project. And I want to find that out, too, because at the end of the day, we might, you know, there's always a possibility we'll walk away from it and say it's just a bridge too far, because, again, all we have is time, and we have resources. And if we can't pay our night bills, at the end of the day, at my age, you don't want to make a lot of mistakes. So even though I've got the sons that are 41 and 39, they're good for, that's why. That's what I thought when I was there. We also approach the development process as a test. We're testing your city. This is not my city. I don't live in Delray, it's New York. And we never want to lose sight of that, that we are testing your community. So it's our obligation to try and mitigate as many issues and challenges that we come up as a result of this resident participation, and I hope it continues on, because that helps us guide our efforts. And hopefully, we can find a happy medium that satisfies the bulk of your needs at the same time that keeps the project economically viable. And a project is economically viable, but the key thing is that the city wants to have something that will help you as citizens and with your quality of life, that is bring in revenue sources. That will help parks and recreation, help the police and fire, help the general administration. And so I look at it as being basically a tool. A tool from the private sector that can come in with certain resources and commit to tucking it out and trying to find a solution at the end of the day. It's pretty challenging, that's a pretty is a poor word on a, on a, on a testy little project like this. It's not like a Stone Creek. Stone Creek was surprisingly difficult in itself. A lot of you may or may not remember when that was being built, but it had a problem with what they call liquefaction. And that means that if you have an earthquake or whatever, and starts, earth starts shaking around, what happens if there's not a strong enough basis for the buildings? Your buildings will just literally torque themselves into ground. And that's, you have to compensate for that. The way we did it is we excavated that site to a depth of ten feet and came back with lime-treated dirt, in essence, concrete, and laid it up at six-inch levels until we got back up to the surface of... So if you ever have an earthquake, run to Stone Creek. Movies can be... At any rate, just, those are the types of things that you run into. And as we go through the discovery process, our team is geared towards trying to find out what those things are, whether they allow the project to be developable at all or at what cost. And right now, at this point, we have no known answers. One of the, one of the things that I would say is that we, we do have the experience in dealing with those issues, which we do deal with on an ongoing basis. We have, on that particular site, thirty-degree slopes, very difficult for roads and what have you in the upper reaches of a project. We have wetlands areas. I went through hell trying to maintain the wetlands areas on the highway and on Canyon Highway. We had an endangered habitat. We had Caltrans cemented the standards for the viaducts over the creek that runs by the face of Stone Creek and continues on really past this particular property. And Caltrans demanded that we build an overcrossing, the two overcrossings that used to get on Highway two eighteen, to a military standard. So you could literally drive a Sherman tank or two or three or four over that and would not crush the culvers. But the, the cost and associated with that was very, very painful. We have a ViewCorporal issues, and I think a lot of you, unless I miss my guess, are here trying to figure out what we're going to look at and that type of thing. So you've got ViewCorporal issues that are, that you've got to, if we develop the property that was selected, we've got to come up with a method of coming up with an acceptable mitigation in that regard. And that's going to be a tough challenge. We also have a regulations that cover properties that are in the flight path and what have you for the airport. I ran into the FAA when I did Stone Creek and convinced them that we were three hundred feet below the rivers of plane going over, which when I'm at Starbucks, I can count, essentially. But we were able to get around that. We have multiple agencies that will have to weigh in. And we have to a degree they'll have veto power over what we do. We've got to satisfy both agencies, probably ten or twelve agencies, I guess. And then, and then I suspect that we'll probably end up, probably doing a full E.I.R. We're leaving that, you know, it's kind of like the frontal commercial, you want to pay me now or pay me later? And the older I've gotten, it's kind of like, oh, you know what, it's just because it's our E.I.R., bam. And I don't have to worry about it, you know, the delays come through. We, as a company, thrive on challenge. And I guess my, my son's in the same way, a racing fan, I never race, I've been sitting here for forty-one years. And we're, we're, I think, I don't know, I think we got it from my own wife, but they're very competitive. And, and I think you need that tenacity to develop a major project like this in regards to where it is, whatever city it's in. But you need that staying power and you need that, that tenacity to not be seen up. And I learned that from the first project that we did in Target Center in San City. Everybody said, you can't be done, you can't get that right, you can't be doing this, can't be doing that. And once I asked them why, they said, well, nobody's ever done it before. And they kind of go, well, where I come from, those are fighting words, you know? What do you mean? And, and obviously, it's a very successful project. As it is, it's a cost-plus unit and a city center. We toughed it out during the recession and city centers survived. And it's doing well. So we've seen a lot during the years. But we do thrive on challenges. And the, the other thing is that the, out of the process, a lot of things you do as a developer is almost insignificant. And when I looked at this project and talked with Mr. Pick about it, very, very quick, I said, well, the potential, you know, from a city's perspective, in terms of operating income aware, there's probably going to be three major sources of income, potential from this project. One would be what they call T.O.T., or trans occupancy tax. And that's a tax that's related against every room here on the peninsula. And the city gets a certain percentage of that T.O.T., trans occupancy tax. I think that we can deliver a hotel, we're doing a two-hundred-and-twenty-room Hyatt right now. Actually, we're doing it in San City. And that E.I.R. is out on the street right now, and it's supported by David, the building period. They've been very much in the hotel industry in the last two or three years, working with Hyatt and various other people. So we had some, some good insight in terms of where we would go, what type of unit it would be, who would be the, who would be the mascot and what have you. And that's important because the MC Suites Hotel, which is just down the block, is the number-two grossing hotel on the Monterey Bay. Anybody here to guess what the number one is? Pebble Beach. But, but Seaside is right behind that, you know? Eighty-five percent occupancy, which is very, very high, it could get over seventy-five percent, it's very unusual. So I think there is good market potential for a boutique hotel, smaller than that. I mean, obviously, the site's smaller and the community's smaller. But there's no, there's no reason why your city cannot take advantage of the, I'm going to say the recreation area. It's obviously close to the airports, you've got that airport traffic to draw on. And then you've also got Highway sixty-eight, and you've got business people traversing the Salinas, Monterey Highway. And so I think that there's an excellent possibility of delivering a hotel. The other source of income are those guys. But unlike Stone Creek, nobody's going to go into that property that we're aware of with the topographing problems, with liquefaction, with the screening issues that will have anybody to have to deal with and be able to put a shopping center there. It's just not going to happen. It's not going to happen. But if you put in one or two small paths or whatever, that maybe flank a, a street that comes off of two eighteen, the city will generate, if we get the right tenant mix, and those small paths, which may be five thousand feet, like your comparison, Stone Creek is fifty-two thousand feet. But let's say that you had a couple of five thousand-foot paths or whatever, and you get good national interest. We've already had one expression of interest. You can actually pull quite a bit of revenue from that. Starbucks, I shudder to ask what they're doing.
Just a quick, sir?
Yes.
I mean, just done this down for me a little bit. I've been listening to you for like thirty minutes, and your project. So is it simply you put in a hotel or you put a parking lot in? I want your project.
If you could just, just be, be a guest here, we'll give you the chance to...
We'll save questions until after the presentations, please.
Agreed. So at any rate, the second issue would be sales tax. Third issue would be the increasing the city's overall assessed valuation, at which, of course, the city receives revenue from, an increase in the overall, in the overall taxation base of the city. There are all sorts of other issues, ongoing permits, fees that would accrue over a five, seven-year period. And then obviously, the other issue that we have to look at, define yet would be the job creation potential for the project. And I'd like to think that some of the residents here would have an opportunity to find, to learn this stuff. So at any rate, I hope you need that. Is the, my approach to development, which kind of gets to your, your question, is that you focus on the development of the property, on that, that component of the property that is not impacted by habitat, that is, is not in wetlands and doesn't have a major habitat. Let's say you want to buy your federal protected habitat. That would probably be the first thing you'd focus on. And then, at the same time, you'd assess working with Fish and Wildlife, we have ongoing discourse with it. You'd be working with them also at the same time, kind of basically defining exactly what the wetlands look like at that point in time. There's, there are wetlands that sometimes it looks like maybe there's ten acres of wetlands, one of these, there's only four or five acres of wetlands. And so, but we don't know that yet. There may be, there may be ten acres of wetlands. But those are, that's just another question, it's a few questions to be answered. And to do that, we have to have a very extensive team of consultants and whatever. And the sooner we can answer those, the sooner we'll know whether this is really a viable project or not. We are interested, we're committed, we love your community. I've had so many darn good issues of feedback from Stone Creek over the years that... And I'm with George, I think you're, I'm one of the George guys that sits out there on Starbucks about three days. We, County Republicans, it's a place like, but we use, obviously, Stone Creek, I'm very proud of that. I'm very happy that I was able to bring it to you. The only other thing that causes a category of things that a developer brings to a project in terms of personnel, resources, and in terms of capital, that's a problem that fights and contributes to the folks. And it is a marriage of sorts, it's basically a marriage, it's a team. One of the good things that we, I can, I can tell you that, of course, we have a lot. And that is a major, major issue. We actually have a duty of this to one percent of the seaside operator. And we're spending half a million dollars trying to get that right, protect it through the courts. But we did, we did, and we have superior water rights even in Allen. And I think we have, we still have, I think, a learning fee of water, which would be adequate to develop the property in any form, from virtually very limited development to intensive. And by this room, something tells me there won't be intensive development. So, unless I missed my guess. But, but anyway, we do bring that to the table. And we've already verified that seaside operator runs by a piece of the seventeen point seven acres. And they verified, yep, that property qualifies. So I'm very happy to say that we only have waters and, which isn't a problem. At any rate, that's all I have to say. If, if, I'm really interested in what you have to say, questions and whatever, because we're here trying to learn, like all of you. And I'll do my best to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross, before you leave, I think a lot of folks here have not had a chance to see your proposal. Would you just explain very quickly what your, what your project consists of, so they can understand what's going on?
Yes, but, excuse me, at this point in time, you know, I had three or four weeks to respond to the SOQ, the state qualifications. It basically, the proposal has background on each of the individuals in the company. It has a listing of, I think, our last...
Mr. Roscoe, your actual project, so they know what, what we're talking about.
Yeah. The project is a mixture of hotel, retail, and potentially some garden, garden parks that we'd like to look into, that we can talk around the hillside and get them out of the pool. I think that there's a demand for a certain number of garden parks, which fit in with the trees. Almost as though, like, I know Carmel Valley Ranch has done a pretty good job of putting residential in with the trees. Yes, sir.
Well, I have a question. Well, let's, let's go with the secret. So let me hear his presentation first, and then to the council, then to the public, request an answer at that time, okay?
If you get the, Mr. Mayor, the question you asked is very quick. You're very, as you look at the property, and we brought some maps that we can look at now if they're up. As you see the property, you can see the, see, there's maps. That's, that's the property. The, the site is provided as outlined in yellow, the property, the city owns that outright. Also, a little blue property to the, kind of, what would be the northeast of it, right there, it's the city of Delray Oaks. Now, Matt, could you get the, okay. This, you can see the dot that says parcel location. See the area that's been fairly well denuded, there's, there's pop trees and what have you. And then as you go to the right, the elevation accelerates. No. There we go, yeah. And that's the area below which where the buses are marked, up above. And that, that grade is probably at least thirty percent. And that hillside is basically, you can't do anything with it, pretty much. What microbes are this, that we define the area that's been pretty well denuded? And then we concentrate on producing a development plan, which would have a mixture of, quite possibly, a hotel at that location and also some retail development. And undoubtedly, we would have a creek off of two eighteen that would access that property.
Can you point that out while you're talking about where, these lines?
Right there, yep.
So that's where your hotel?
I don't, I, you know, the hotel may be in the upper left-hand corner or wherever. It, it's kind of, it's got to relate very much to ViewCorporal issues. It's got to be relating to topography. It's a great developer to deal with, that balance. At the same time, we might find, as I mentioned, that the, the headlands of the proppon, that may, and this is where we'll turn to EMC and their consultants, to determine how much of that vegetation really is safer. I mean, it really is something we have to stay away from. And if there's a possibility that we could pick up a freestanding building or something like that, we're lucky enough to do that and not disturb the forested area, that's the headlines, the headlines of the, of the proppon, curb down. That would be done consistent and consecutively with the development, development plan for the denuded area. That's a very small area, that's probably only two acres. I've heard two versions of it, two and a half to three and a half acres, or seventeen and a half acres. And that may be the only property that's developable, as possible, if that's small, that's developable. And some of that is impacted with liquefaction. So I've got two questions about exactly whether this is a Trojan horse and whether, whether it actually is developable or not. I don't know the answer, but I will get the answer, you know, we'll develop the answer. And we'll come back and, and share with you what we've discovered as we go through this process. And then, and the third, the third issue is whether or not at some point in time the city wishes to connect out to another property that they own, which is on South Boundary Road. That's not really, that's being discussed tonight, but it turns out that there's another parcel that the city owns on South Boundary Road, that connects... that connects with the seventeen point seven acres. And we haven't really discussed that. We just point that out, that that area connects with seventeen acres. I don't think anything will ever happen really from, if you take that blue line, the leftmost blue line drawn straight down to Canyon Del Rey. I, I really don't see a heck of a lot happening in, to the left of that moving, moving red dot at this point. It's actually a very small development.
Mr. Ross, thank you very much. We'll start off with council questions first. Any questions from our council members? Yes, council member.
Mr. Ross, do you have a sense of what your, I know you're, you're still in a preliminary stage of the minimum and maximum extent of development based on what we've observed from the land so far?
What the, how extensively would you allow them to be? No, because, I'm sorry, for a number of reasons. We want to listen tonight. We want to hear the sentiment of the audience. We want to, we want to take all that as we can and talk about it. And that is information. We've got to do that as soon as possible because time, the parking meter is running. But suffice it to say, if you look through our dossier, we're in constant contact with tenants, hotels, with all the agencies that are affected by this property. And I think we have a good rapport with them across the board. And we can get those answers sort of quickly. But because this is a very preliminary form of a process that we want to prove, it's not impossible to come in here, the site plan, talk to you about density and what have you. I really need to table that for another meeting down the road. Then we come down to a complete development plan, very transparent, you know, to show you what, what we're into, what the costs are, whatever. And I really like engaging the council, but we don't have, we don't have a lot of secrets in our business. And certainly for us around here, doing, doing, having done nine largest projects here in the last decade, fifteen, fifteen, seventeen years, we don't, there's not a lot of secrets. If you don't like us, you won't like us now because we're the same, you know? But if you do, if you do see and talk to people who resolve these difficult problems, we have a chance. We're still hard-headed and we still go after it. And I think we've done a good job of balancing council needs with citizen needs. That's our challenge. And sometimes we can't do that. We, we sure try to. I might die trying.
Health morale, yes, I'm saying.
Oh, you said, just one more. You, you mentioned you had adjudicated rights to water. Is this, is this unique to you? And to what extent does that limit the development by others?
You just have to find water someplace. Here's something. We have the water, we're, I guess I can talk about it. We're negotiating a seven acre foot deal with Chong at this point in time. And then decide whether it's still seven acres, seven acres feet. So we're, you know, as developers, we're local. I never want to do a project that takes more than two hours of drive from my office. Maybe I'm just getting lazy or, I don't see it as long as I used to, but, but, but we're, we do that deal with Chong. We have, we probably still have enough water for any phase of this project. But we'll be out of water, better than, because we're, we're giving out our adjudicated rights. Once they're gone, they're gone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So market for your, I think you mentioned the word boutique hotel. Couple of questions about that. As, as you, I understand it's very preliminary, but as you sketch this out, what is the anticipated number of units that would be in the hotel, how many rooms?
We plugged in a number of one hundred and twenty rooms.
And what do you see as the height of the hotel?
That's one of those questions about the performance. I wish I could give you a straight answer, but it's part of our effort to mitigate. You know, the last thing that somebody in the condominiums across the way want to look at is the site of hotel. So, you know, it could be, it could end up taking the form of a two-story unit or it could be a four-story unit or whatever. But that's an act we look at very, very closely. And that's going to be an issue that the public's going to, well, you know.
I'm sure they will. And there, the San City is beginning, finally after twenty-five years, sort of on their eco resort, or eco resort. Would your, do, would your plans include some sort of environmental issue or topics like their addressing and theirs?
Ironically, I saw Mr. Gondor in nineteen ninety-four, the city manager, said, hey, come on down and let me show you your competitor. I said, what are you talking about? And oh, this guy wants to do a hotel. And it was Echador, nineteen ninety-four. Now, that probably falls under the category of winning the battle, losing the war, because, you know, that's like twenty-three years to do the Eco Resort. He's a very right guy, but he's, we're different in that regard. The Eco Resort, I don't think really will be all that great of an impact on the city of San City, largely because of basic things. I mean, that building doesn't have a straight border in it. It's all curvilinear. My guess is that the rents that they'll have to charge per room will vastly exceed close range. I mean, I'm talking like two thousand, five hundred dollars a night or something like that. So it just kind of goes over my head. We went the other way. We went to Hyatt Hilton, we think the two master's that are productive. They have a good, they have a good network system as far as, like Hilton, or Hyatt, it's eighty percent of its money off of the resort site. And so along with that, I have found out that there is a whole cadre of millennial type of hotels, which I would call boutique hotel, that are fun, they're lively, and they're, they're geared towards the forty-five year old and down. And, and they don't, they don't charge two thousand dollars a night. It's affordable. And, and all I can tell you is that, my guess is that the Hyatt will generate about a million dollars a year in TOT. So if we're having that group count, I'd like to hope that we're somewhere in halfway or about that.
One more question. So again, it's very preliminary here, but have you anticipated or had some idea of what you, the kind of traffic that this is going to generate? A whole kind of canyon del Rey, two eighteen.
You know, I, I hate to use generalization, but nevertheless. And at the end of the day, just because of, and we learned this from going through that on our EIR, it's had say recently. Traffic impacts were in the next, or two hundred and twenty rooms. It, it involved restriking the over crossing at Canyon Del Rey for support for Southbound project. Okay, Mr. Ross, that's crazy. Mr. Davis says, you know, it really isn't traffic.
Of course, you have. Okay, next, Vice Mayor Parker.
That's exactly, I was going to ask about the traffic. Are you going to get that? And, and where would you, where would be the entrance to this project?
We pointed, it would be off Canyon Del Rey.
Right there.
Okay, two questions, Mr. Ross. If I could, please. Number one, oh, if you could, right after. You mentioned there might be some commercial as part of this project. Could your project pencil out where you can make a nice return on investment without including commercial? Or is that a vital part of the overall project?
It's, it's always possible.
It's always a little bit possible. The other thing is, it looks like you're only looking to use the one-third portion, the Highland, the light brown.
Yes.
So you're looking at the area next to our frog pond, which is wetlands right there, and also down south below the bus there. So you're really only interested in perhaps purchasing and using one-third and most, where the other, the other two parcels could remain to the city and maybe use as mitigation, never be developed whatsoever, which would give additional income to the city.
It could be less than a third. It could very well be less than.
But that's a possibility. Okay, clear about, yes.
That was one of my questions in the other, not some of those, but other questions that I have, with the exception of, would you consider doing your project without any retail?
Could you speak a little louder, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Would you consider doing the project without any retail?
Certainly would. We would consider doing it without retail. However, the problem is, whether it be me or anybody else, if you cannot balance the extreme cost of development of the property, again, because of traffic issues, infrastructure, intersections and what have you, if a hotel will not generate enough income to do it, what will happen is the development will just, it will make some, you just say, well, it's just, the project is a bridge to far. And so that's where transparency comes in. So you understand the process that we go through, so you can see the performance, you can see what we're up against. And you won't even have to ask the question. You'll look at it and say, I wouldn't do that. And probably right on the tail, Mr. Pickman, you'll know from us, say, thank you very much for the opportunity, but I'm going to go back and work on my cars.
Then also, I believe you mentioned guest cottages. How many of those are you proposing?
Again, I don't know the answer to that. I will find the answer to that. But I, you know, I didn't really say guest cottages. I really said garden apartments.
Well, oh, garden apartments.
They may not be tied to the hotel.
Okay. What we do envision, just, I realize you don't have any concrete answers. But how many, who would that accommodate?
I would venture a guess and say that we'd probably do somewhere between thirty and forty, if they're compact, if they're together.
Thirty or forty apartments?
Apartments.
Thank you, good.
I think every size, I think there are questions.
Okay.
Can you just follow up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to clarify the last point on garden apartments, do those generate TOT?
Yes. No, they don't generate TOT. I think they were ready.
Okay, so only a right to assess valuation. Okay.
Will it be long-term, a purpose life for a year, or will it be short-term like a hotel?
No, I, no, I think it would be long-term. They would be housing. One of the things we found out is that the, the apartments are, are very, very high demand. Unfortunately, I live right off the world's grid myself, and I have to fight that traffic every time I go home. But my thing is that we would try to do a apartment that has a price for it, that appeals to people that right now are hogging up probably sixty-eight, and that gets back to the issue of a Hyatt sixty-eight. We might find out that by having that element, it actually works to our advantage, dealing with the Hyatt sixty-eight coalition and, you know, those things like that, you know, oftentimes neutralize opposition to the project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's go to the public right now. Now, here's what we're going to do. We've got to go to the microphone because we're taking all this, again, for your great, great, great grandchildren. Yeah, I love, so if you would, if we have a line going up around the back there, if you want to ask questions of Mr. Ross or make comments about the project, please, you have your opportunity. Please try to be succinct to the point, the point you're trying to handle. If the points aren't in the name, you take whatever, my place first. And then please state your, your name and general location.
I'm Carol Rojas, and I live in the condos, the Oaks. And, you know, I think probably one of the prime concerns we had in the Oaks is losing that green strip along the canyon, Bucia, I believe you would call it. And you were indicating, you were indicating that access to the brown area would be directly off Canyon Del Rey. Is that correct? Now, if the city owns that blue rectangle, why isn't it possible to have an access from South Boundary Road instead? That wouldn't be so visible.
One of the real challenges of that property is a thirty-degree grade. If you, if you go out there and walk the property, it's like just to get up to the other levels.
Okay.
Now, that's not necessarily a walk knockout factor, but it really does, I mean, play a thirty-three grade for a road that starts in San Francisco.
What is the grade from Canyon Del Rey?
From the hand, it is probably two, eight percent.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Almarck Ellis. I'm a local resident and architect. Question I have for Mr. Ross would be, how do you envision this as part of the city? What I see is the future development in the WU and past development on the other side. This property really becomes a crossroads. And so I'm interested to know how the development integrates the city rather than splits apart.
I guess I don't understand your question because I, South Boundary Road is, is a sporty property. But I don't see that with a really skilled city. Oh, I guess I'm.
Let me clarify. The city I see already as being somewhat disjointed. And I would hope that the council and planning commission, as we move forward, would work to unify the elements of the city and not just have separate distinct neighborhoods, which might as well be part of Monterey or part of Seaside. But actually somehow, as we move forward, create and enhance our identity.
Well, if you, if you put those two projects together, then that all of a sudden becomes a city boundary. It would be within the city. We have, we talked about the new parcel, but they could be a joint. And you could run your, your city's boundary map right over the top of it. You know, you've got parts in, partial recreation, or parts, there's a regional park that's right on the left. And then on the right, there's other towns, there's homes by the city of Monterey that go all the way down to the car off, and across.
Mr. Ross, if you could talk to the mic, please, so we can ask you your answer, so, like, transcript, I have.
Thank you. Keep me free of stuff, wanting to hear what's been. Yeah, I, I would, I think the problem is that nothing lays out like president. So it's all ex-utters and whatever. And over here, we, we put up the law because it's a necessity because of the, the politics of this area and what the city's grew. The city may very well want to consider that property is outrunning the route. And if you do, they're very, they're tough, you know, it's definitely not possible. But I think that, you know, whether the city border goes around there or not, the city of Monterey has also expressed interest in connecting their Rigsdale Road over Cat, Old Little, and then on the, on the South Boundary Road. But Dan is very keen that not happen, but it's supposed to.
That was an excellent comment we just had before. We do, it's outside the purview of this, but we do have, we're working on, we'll have public hearings about downtown Del Rey that we're working on right now, trying to tie, we do want to tie the city together. It's either north or south. When we're going to downtown, we'll tie that together. Stay tuned, ladies and gentlemen, we'll be back here again. Okay, next, public comment, please.
David Rojas, I'm living in the Oaks, I'm a board member of the focus. Sir, I have a couple, four questions to ask you. One, it has to do with your boutique hotel. You say you have a hundred and twenty, across a hundred and twenty rooms. And then add to that, that would be a Hyatt.
That would be Hyatt, Hyatt's good enough, but it would be a high-profile.
But imagine that, general.
But yeah, it would be a.
In addition, you would have another forty-eight, thirty, forty-eight apartments, stuff, block, guest cottage.
Do you see what's coming out of your, is how many apartments and stuff like that? At this point, honestly, sir, I can give you a number to go back.
Basically, I'm talking, I'm looking at around.
Sir, it's really early.
Eighty-five.
I think it's very early in the process. He's saying he doesn't have the specifics right now.
I understand that, I understand that. But I'm looking at around two hundred. Now, I'm also, I wish I had the slide, but, but I'm looking at that little old two eighteen. How does that going to affect, be affected by all that traffic coming in and out? I don't know where you're going to get a right-hand, left-hand turn on there, but it remains in the future. And I also wanted to applaud you, coming up with ten acre feet of water, that's amazing. That, that, that's a shocker. If anything happens tonight, that's a shocker.
Yes.
That you're thinking about trying to drain some of that, putting a building, what did you say?
I said, look into and explore here, that is all a protected area. You might find out that only three acres and seven acres is technically a habitat, or to be added, get in certain, there's a danger of species, or whatever, and maybe over forty-one years, I've seen it very well, I've seen just the opposite of that, and didn't think that there was anything that could all of a sudden, is there?
But you have a lot of positive notes there on your initial discussion, but when you started to even think about that area, that's a negative.
Real, real big negative. I totally know, totally serious. And that's why it's not part of my help, it's kind of like, you've got to interact with everybody. Back to you, sir.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Okay, my name's Brooke Bailey, and I was living in the Oaks, I've been there for twenty years, and naturally, I have a lot of concerns. Someone mentioned part of that parcel being sacred, those of us who live in a whole pool seventeen acres sacred, because it's a family sphere for any of us, given the morning you feel like you're walking into a park. But that being said, I know this is all just a proposal, one of my big questions is about the hotel. I work at a lot of hotels in the area, and everybody probably knows that from November till April, those hotels have a very low occupancy rate. That will be, because a boutique hotel called Casa Palmero, it's twenty-six rooms, they close it down until April. Now, that particular location also, one concern about is versus the hotels Monterey, City of Monterey, all those hotels have a walk-in place where they can go for entertainment or restaurants that night. This location would not be real good for that particular type of property.
We think, appreciate your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Phil Ferrell, I live also on the Oaks. I'm surprised there's so many people from other parts of Del Rey Oaks coming in on this, but maybe it's a deal. And coming here, I've come here a couple times, but I see the picture you have in the back there, they hang it on the wall, and I wonder why, it's why you don't have stores and buildings and other things. Maybe it's because it's something nice to look at, I'm not sure, but it is something that hopefully has been due. And coming into Del Rey Oaks, you come in with the Stone Creek in the corner, it is, you know, it's convenient, a lot of people in two eighteen pull off on there for things, but coming in, it's not a city township feel, at least for us, okay, I try my in the day. I'm not sure how many people in Del Rey Oaks even stop there, I don't know, it's more the go-to-stay kind of stoppage, but, or people who live and work in Monterey really much, better stop there. But I don't think we really need too much retail as much as we need to really focus on the development plan you have already. You did get property from Fort Worth. Can you show, you have the screen, can we change the screen a little bit? I know there's a film there, it was a little larger bit. But before we do that, can you show where the Fort Worth is, where our Fort Worth land is? Does anyone know?
It's north to southbound, you wrote it, they're very top, that road goes across, north past three hundred and sixty acres that we own as far as the city's concerned.
Okay, from there, oh, who cares, a little, there you go. Okay, so, so to circle where we have, we have there, this whole thing, oh, all the way up there, wow, all that property, what are we doing with that? That's funny how that's not done. I think we'd like to see that done, see how you do there, see what you put in there, see how it works for a road, you know, that congestion and bringing the town together. And then, you know, if need be, I know, you know, ready to use a big thing, if that's not suffice it, then maybe look at the seventeen acres. Those seventeen acres can be your walkways, all the, let's go out and, you know, get into the environment, save the trees, save the plants, save the herb. I'm not one of those, but you know what? You gotta have people there for that. I'm sure there'll be tons cramming out for that. But to develop that, people walking through, people walking through, that's what they see in Del Rey Oaks, that's what you wanna look at right there. If you don't, take it down, okay? Because that's what we have to see. Want to see property values now? There you go. Make it less than city, make it, I lived in grocery markets here, they're apartments, you have land that was signed, that's all, they call it that, makes it nice, okay? So, it's a counter to thirty, thirty, either side.
Next speaker, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's really important, we have a right to speak, but clapping is really important.
I've been in Del Rey Oaks for sixteen years. A couple of comments, one is, there's a lot of empty retail in the space, all of this peninsula, number one. Number two, the state of retail in general, I don't know how many people here are members of Amazon Prime, but retail is not in a great place in our time, this time of our lives, so that's another problem. I also don't see how forty garden apartments are going to mitigate the traffic going to and fro from Peninsula, Selena's, I think that's what Mr. Roscoe was referring to. Just trying to turn onto Canyon Del Rey from either side is really difficult to.
Well, there is, and one of the things I notice, and I've seen it every day for sixteen years, are people who, and they're probably not residents, people who drive, this is a separate issue, but it would be exacerbated, people who drive into the bike lane rather than pause when somebody's turned off the Canyon Del Rey. I've seen pedestrians almost hit, and I think it's a huge liability, and I don't see that being addressed at all. And, boy, if you wanna have revenue, have Del Rey Oaks police officer there and pull people over. Every time that's done, you'll see a big spike, because I've seen it all day long. And then the other is, and I don't, I might have missed something early on in this process, but with the housing crisis down in Peninsula, has there been any talk of developing any of, any of these parcels into housing, and that can be a mix of whatever, I don't know whether that is homes, whether it's condos, and still have it work nicely with the environment of Del Rey Oaks, that is our name, and we have, we are blessed to have a lot of beautiful property here. So it would be really nice, whatever we do, to integrate it in a way that enhances that and, as opposed to just putting up another little hotel, because even with those rooms, the occupancy tax, with the occupancy rate and the competition, unless there's some really great reason to put a hotel there, I'm assuming, of course, that Mr. Roscoe would not run a hotel, he would then sell the property to somebody who's going to run it, and then how do we have any control over that and how they run their business? And how, how do we, you know, they're going to commit after it's done, and then they're going to, you know, do what they do, and that may not be what we want. So that's, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
I'm Alexis Spencer, and I live on Condola Drive, and I have a question, I'm not even gonna expect the answer, but I'm curious to know, if, let's say we have a hundred and twenty unit hotel, how many additional people that's gonna break into the city? Is it a hundred thousand, is it ten thousand over the course of a year with average packs? I wrote my dissertation in part on the impact of a small town of seven thousand people that started to get an influx of a hundred to two hundred thousand tourists and the impact on local residents. And one of the things we do know in tourism that's well-established in the business and hospitality sector is that when you have an outside business, like a major chain, they're in the business to maximize what's called leakage, that's the term of it, which means they try to capture those tourist dollars as much as they humanly possibly can, so that it's not, doesn't stay local, which is why it's critical when we develop here that we develop with locally-owned businesses, so that the money comes here, stays here, keeps circulating, so it's not the minimum head tax for a person to be here. There's also a robust and increasingly growing literature and experts who look at things like the impacted hotels in small towns and cities, from the infrastructure, like Stone Creek, I love Stone Creek, actually, but there's never enough parking there, what's gonna happen next? I would love a couple of great restaurants and more wine tasting around here, but with the influx of people, you know, I walk that trail back there, the people who work in those buildings, they're always standing back there littering, what's gonna happen with all the transients? We know Carmel already has a problem with, with the Airbnb issue with transients, and that's just Airbnb, that's, they're so, so, to some of my points. I really, really appreciate that you held this special meeting, and that you're being very fastidious and open with this, and I would hope that the city council takes the extra step to do some studies, real feasibility studies, to really understand the potential impact on local residents and look at the pros and cons of that particular type of development for the residents who live here and the revenue that we want to raise, to keep it a great place to live.
Thank you, ma'am. Just one other thing, you know, sorry, City Mayor's taking notes, all the comments you've made, he's trying to incorporate those notes into action in the future with the garden development, so what you're saying is, is making an impact. Next speaker, please.
Yes, I'm Alvar, and I'm from La Loma. I have a question for you, sir. I've heard a lot about the development of this area and the retail and other things. Would you be willing to consider taking part of that land and developing it for a recreational park to the public, free, like something on the same lines as Dennis Menace Park? Because in that whole area, we talked about trails and hiking, and we have a small park in our, in our area, just under our house. But for the future of Del Rey Oaks, you really wanna look at families, you wanna look at children, I've got five daughters, and I tend to have, hopefully, quite a few grandkids, and I'm gonna be a theater until I die, and I'm, you know, that's the way I'm looking at it. So if you look at that land over there, the duck pond's wonderful, and I've looked at it, a trail you can really pick up with it, but what about something in there that, that you own, because we don't be liable for it, that's maintained by you, like Dennis Menace Park, so it's got a property, and then we can use that as a community, I just wanna put that out to you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hello, again, I'm Paul Stor, Arbor Place. Just again, getting back to vision and developing on undisturbed land, I've got some experience with that, not positive. And I tell you, and this isn't really the risk that I'm a developer, of course, but the infrastructure, bringing sewage, electrical utilities, is immense when you're going out on disturbed land. And gentleman mentioned Dennis Menace Park, thinking of something adjacent to that, the city of Monterey's windows on the bay, where the city had a vision for what they wanted, and there were underutilized, underperforming retail shops along the windows on the bay area that they took and, over time, purchased and repurposed. And I'm wondering if there is an area in Del Rey Oaks that may be underutilized, you know, perhaps areas behind parties that have infrastructure, have electrical, have sewage already flattened, that could be used to develop for the future types of projects. You're developing in place these types of projects, and you have that linkage and concentration right there without moving across, I just think it's personally a big risk to get, from a development standpoint, to get over there, and you may have the ability, you know, I don't know if those businesses are doing that, I'm sure, is anyone here who has one of those businesses, maybe checks my characterization of that, I'm just, I'm brainstorming at this point, but it might be worth considering developing parcels elsewhere where the raw development isn't needed as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other member of the public wishing to ask questions of Mr. Roscoe or the company? Yes, sir.
Jay Barcho, I live on Lewis and Seacoast Drive since December nineteen seventy-four. I've walked and jogged on that trail, the property, hundreds of times, and the view is spectacular. Up in the right corner, you can go eagle bait, you can look all the way out to Point Pinos from there. And so, I mean, it really is a great desirable piece of property, I don't know whether it would be a structure at the top of it, but it is a, it is a fabulous view, so it's just a, this is a prime piece of property, guys, a lot to look for it, so I hope we can find the best possible use for it, or generate the most revenue for, for the city.
Thank you, sir.
What do you think? George Japp, I live on Losi Roos. I've written down several things here, and I hope I give them away more than I can. I was involved with Stone Creek, I think it's a great little development for what it is, a great utilization of that piece of property. There could be some things we could fix, park to use a little, you always look behind you. Retail development is proposed, I know Stone Creek, we're getting more and more service-oriented businesses, which bring no money to the city per se, we generate through sales tax. We have the bank, we have the veterinary, so I don't think we bring that whole bunch of money here, but, so I'm worried about that. I think the occupancy has already been mentioned, I'd be curious to know what the occupancy rate is for the hotel that's right outside the airport compared with what other places are, because even though it's closed, we may not get any revenue from that. There's always this hashing around, we're talking about how many rooms are gonna be here. At this point, who knows? You know, Mr. Roscoe would love to have a twenty-story apartment or hotel there for income, and in the Oaks, we'd rather not have any. This is where it all gets hashed out, we'll go through months and months of whatever gets developed there, so it's very hard to predict what will be there between what the citizens want and what the developer wants, it becomes a happy medium. And as far as you shed, I hate to say it, but I look over the Oaks, you should have seen it before the Oaks were there, it was beautiful, you guys know, and it sucks, so let's not point fingers, okay? If you come from General Chippewa, North South Road, from me, the Oaks looks very nice, blends in, I think whoever the planning commission did that back then, did a very good job of having it blend in, whatever gets developed there, the planning commission, the city will make sure that it blends in and it's very nice view shed for you guys as the Oaks has been for me. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the, yes, ma'am? Next, please.
I'm living in the Oaks, and I bought in the Oaks, I have a view, and obviously, I didn't see the view before the Oaks was built, but why take away what has attracted people to the area when you've got so many other parcels? I developed this particular parcel. I know it's selfish, because I live there, I don't want it to feel wet, but I chose Del Rey Oaks over Monterey and Seaside and other places because of the quality. If I wanted to live next to a hotel or directly across, I could have walked a lot less expensively and been next to a hotel or across. A boutique hotel, I don't know, I've got my phone with me, I would have thought it's a hundred and twenty rooms, certainly not where I can live. A boutique hotel is something like twenty rooms max, not a hundred and twenty. If we were developing to bring in. If we were developing to bring in people that live here and are part of the community, and we're giving hands into people that need it, that's one thing. But we're not. We're going to put another hotel? Like we need another hotel? Does this city need money that desperately? Do we need the revenue? I'm asking a question. I'm not being, do we need this revenue? Because if we do, have you ever thought about compulsory versus from the apps? We're just making that hotel. Then it doesn't get rid of anybody's views, and you've got to renovate the facility. I mean, do we really need this much money for the entire? Anybody?
The purpose is for you to give your views for consideration by the council regarding the development. Talking about the need for money.
But I am talking about the development. I'm asking, do we actually need it?
It's all in that. Each council member here probably has a different opinion of how much money, what we are financially. We're doing better now than we did before, but we have a long ways to go.
But the other parcels, then, would they not give us the revenue that we're looking for? Why does it have to be this particular parcel that people say they walk on, that there's wetness, there's habitat? It is taking away, and I'm sorry if I took somebody else's view away and buy in the very beginning, but it is taking a view away for a property that most people bought there for that reason. If you look at the price of condominiums and the sizes all around Monterey, all the others per square foot and everything are cheaper because of what you're looking on. Because you're looking on the Hilton, or you're looking on something else. And that's not why I bought here. Now, it doesn't really matter, I suppose. I can sell it to whoever, and it doesn't care. But I don't understand why you would.
I think you've made your point. It's not that they, we're not here to blame. We're here, I think you've made your point. You don't want, you don't want, you think the land is not going to be used for other opportunities and so forth. You don't want to, you've got to destroy it, and you understand it.
Yeah, I just think you've got a lot of other rooms.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate your comments, and your comments are concerned. Any other member of the public wishing to make comments? If you'd please line up there so we can save some time. It's getting later and later, the travel time that adds up if you're with us.
Sorry about that. So I have a couple of folks in the Oaks that weren't able to come because of short notice to send me their views. So I want to just show you what they're talking about from their different houses. The other thing, I have a question. As I was reading, we have a code 54222. It states that you need to have sent or written notice to the State Resources Agency. Was that done? And if so, what's the response?
Could you explain what the law is, what it says specifically?
The code 54222 has to do with distilled surplus land. There's an entire process of how you categorize surplus land and then how you eliminate it. But you have to go to local parks districts. You have to go to the State Resources Agency in writing.
I'll turn to George, all right?
Okay.
I think at this point, it's just conceptual, but to my knowledge, that's not been done yet. But you're, you're in.
Okay, so that needs to be done before the RFP went out.
Yeah, I think it's just for conceptual.
Because it's California statute.
So the RFP is just for conceptual proposals. Just no firm decisions yet.
Okay. Only have to send you the code.
So the decision from the council could very well be to do nothing to this parcel. So totally.
Or it could be to decide on the development.
At which point?
And therefore, and therefore, you know, you're in. I'll send you the code. But it was not followed.
Again, we're in the very first stages of the development proposal and so forth. This is backfiring to some extent. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to give you an outsider's perspective. I moved here about two years ago from the Bay Area. And I moved here for a reason. Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Jeff, out of Delray Oaks. And the reason I moved out here, because of the congestion, the traffic, the retail and everything else that the Bay Area offers. I actually grew up in Santa Clara. And back in the '60s, I watched them build a retail center right in the middle of the downtown, the main street. And to this day, those people are all placed to develop. I know the situation is a little different, but I see this as the last refuge in Delray Oaks as an outsider, somebody who's recently moved here. And it would be a shame to develop that area. I really do see it being a big eyesort of this community. I understand it brings in revenue, but I think there are other options. For instance, that parcel on the backside of Fort Ordinum. And I just want to give you my opinion on that.
So much appreciated. Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to make a statement, ask questions? Okay, seeing none. Appreciate everybody's comment. That's what the block is all about. Bring it back to the council. Last minute questions or statements. Okay, next, we have Mr. Donaldson of this project. And thanks for taking the time to be on this evening. And I'd appreciate it if someone shared your proposal with us.
Okay, as Tim gets that pulled up, my presentation pulled up. My name is Scott Donaldson. I live on Portola Drive. And that is my development team. It's just me. First off, I'd like to thank the city council and the city manager for this opportunity. I would also like to thank the public because without your voice, this opportunity probably would not have happened. So thank you for that. What you see up there is a picture of a beautiful 17-acre parcel from the inside. And my intent is to try and keep it that way. Up front, I'd like to share a few highlights of my proposal with you. First, it only develops 1% of the entire parcel. If you look at the size of the 17.7 acres, it equals about 771,000 square feet. When you look at the structures and the infrastructure that I plan to put on it, it would equal about 11,000 square feet. And that's where I get the 1%. It connects a geographically separated community. It goes to what Mark Ellis had mentioned before, that because of terrain and major roads that we have in the city, we've kind of created these separate little areas in Delray Oaks. And my plan tries to bring that together, connects the community. And lastly, it respects the environment and your concerns. As Mr. Roscoe mentioned, a lot of this parcel is very difficult to develop. And my proposal sets aside that land for eternity as open green space. And that's about three-quarters of the entire property. Now, to touch on the open space, what I propose is that the city retains over five acres to expand the Frog Pond. And I've got a map on the following slide that will show you exactly where that location is. Also, because of the high-solving areas, it is about 30% in a lot of those areas. And there's a lot of vegetation, as you know, particularly a lot of mature oaks that are out there. Those are the areas that I want to dedicate as green space and view shed. What that does is it eliminates a significant destruction of oaks and significant grading if you were to go up in those areas and try to develop it. Okay. Here's a look. It's a three-D view of the 17-acre parcel. It doesn't include the entire parcel. You've got some area down here. It's actually pretty significant. But the purpose behind this map is to show you the contours of the property. The area that I propose we set aside, that remains city property, is over five acres in that highlighted portion right here. And there's a lot of good reasons why we should do that. First and foremost, about half of the entire frontage of the Oaks, that view shed would be protected. It also follows a natural contour of the vegetation and the tree line that goes up the side, the face of the canyon and connects nicely with the habitat area that's to the north. And what it creates is this entire area, which would remain green and open. The other nice thing of it is there's a trail that goes right through here. Goes across General Jim Moore Boulevard and connects directly to the Frog Pond to allow that access. Now, looking at the high-sol terrain and the vegetation, the areas that I show highlighted in yellow are those areas that I propose remain completely green and open. In other words, there should be no development ever in those areas to include the area that goes along the stream. So if you look at that light green area, everything outside of that, to include a significant area to the south, would be dedicated for eternity as green space. Another significant issue within the community is the connectivity. My proposal connects the separated areas of the city as I described. And I'm going to show you another map on the next slide. It kind of outlines that for you. It facilitates pedestrian and bike traffic by developing and improving the trails that naturally go into, through, and outside of the 17-acre property. And it creates synergy with our future development that's going to occur out at Fort Ordinum site, which I too am concerned that that could easily become their own community out there, more aligned with other areas like Ryan Ranch and Laguna Seca as opposed to being part of the Delray Oaks community. It also establishes a caretaker for the property, which has in some ways been neglected over time. In the upper left-hand corner is a homeless encampment that existed out there for about three to four years. The individuals have left, but the trash still remains. And then in the lower right-hand corner is a lot of trash and debris that's collected in that stream that exits and flows out to Laguna Grande. Okay, this map depicts those separate areas that, as a city, because of the terrain and the roads that are around us, has kind of separated us into those areas. And as you see, the 17 acres sits in the perfect spot to connect those areas. And that's what my proposal does, by developing these trails that flow from the north through the property and across, and also from the Frog Pond. This is what it looks like on the map. There are several trails, like I said, that can be developed, can be improved, that lead into the property. And my intent is to work very closely with Fortag to ensure that happens. This will allow our residents to traverse through the property from the north across Highway 218, which you'll see in a follow-on slide that I have that shows I intend to put a crosswalk there to facilitate that pedestrian and bike traffic. And then, most importantly, improve this trail that goes in and out of the Frog Pond. Here's my vision. I take a very modest, conscientious approach to development of this property that's very environmentally friendly. And it honors the past history of the parcel. Some of you may know, many years ago, in the late '60s, early '70s, there used to be horses out there. And I found out later, there was also cows that were out there. Matter of fact, Mary Pounds, up until 1972, Mary Pounds is a resident of Delray Oaks before Delray Oaks was a city. She had her two horses out there. There was also a barn structure where the horses could come in out of the weather. They fed them in there. That existed. There's actually some remnants as you go by or go down Highway 218. You can kind of see some remnants of that. So realizing that sometimes the past history of a piece of property can dictate its best use for the future. What I'm proposing is that we reestablish that barn to create a destination location that can be used for special events and gatherings, celebrations, and also community events. This is a conceptual idea that I have of what the barn would look like. It's very modest. It's about 40 by 45 feet, which would be about 1700 square feet, about the size of my house. It's one-story, maximum height of 18 feet, that can be used for those types of events. It would also have an outdoor seating area. And when not used for that purpose, what I intend is that it would be a dog-friendly place where our residents could traverse through the property, sit, relax, and enjoy themselves. The other thing that my proposal provides is overnight accommodations that could be used by those that are utilizing the venue or someone using it wanting or wanting to have a hotel alternative here on the Bay Area. To do that, what I'm proposing is to place five cabins. I'm limited by water, and I'll talk water in a minute. That I can only have probably five cabins. That's the guidance that I've been given by the Monterey Health Department. So this is a conceptual idea of what those cabins would look like. They look like tiny house cabins. Very small in size, 12 by 12 feet or 16 by 16 feet. Very basic on the inside. What you would have is a shower and a toilet with a sink and a bed. And what I would do is place them very carefully around the property and make use of concealment in the area so they're not able to see or be seen from the outside area. So all told, this is what the project would look like. The green area, this large rectangle, is where the barn would be placed. And these five squares represent five cabins. This gray area is the access road that goes up to the parking area and down to where the cabins are. And these are the trails that lead into and out of the property. Those orange dots represent minimal fencing and gates that I will put in to ensure security of the site in the evening hours. Or at least help with it. Okay. My project will take, I estimate, about two years to complete, realistically. And I'll do it in two phases. The first phase focuses in on the infrastructure aspects of the plan. And these are the things that I would focus in on. The walking and biking paths that I described, also creating the access, the parking in the roads, bringing the utilities up onto the property. Currently, all utilities are available along Highway 218 or underneath it. And because there were some significant boundary changes, a survey would need to be done, and that fencing that I spoke of. There's a lot of man being and natural occurring debris that's on the property that would need to be cleaned up and trees would need to be trimmed. Phase two would be the actual construction of the barn and the outdoor seating area, and then placing the cabins, hooking up to utilities, and ultimately being open for business. So there are a lot of challenges, one of them being water. As the mayor mentioned, there are, maybe the city manager did, there are two inactive wells on the property. One was drilled in 1988. The other one was drilled in 1999. The one in 99 was tested that year for yield and quality. And what it showed is that it yielded about 10 gallons per minute. That is the rate that would limit the number of cabins to five that I spoke of. That is the rate that would limit the number of cabins to five that I spoke of earlier. And as far as the quality goes, it would have to be treated to meet county standards. However, my proposal requires less than an acre foot of water, and that's how they measure water in non-residential use. And in a lot of ways, that means really nothing to people. So what I tried to show here is the residential equivalent of the average three-bedroom, two-bath house in Delray Oaks, which has about fourteen to fifteen water credits. My proposal would require less than two average houses. Regardless, I would establish a gray water system that would collect water from the showers and sinks and use that water for irrigation and possibly toilet flushing. The other challenge is the access. Caltrans will require that left-hand turn lane onto Highway 218. And in addition to that, as you've heard before, environmental reviews will need to be done and traffic studies, so those are also required. But my goal would be to keep disruption to a minimum, and by that I mean looking for a spot along Highway 218 where the width of the highway could already accommodate that left-hand lane without having to create an additional lane for that left-hand turn purpose. And also minimizing the disruption by picking an area that's closest to 218 in order to move on to the property. In addition, a culvert would need to be placed over the stream, very similar to what already exists under Highway 218 and under General Jim Moore Boulevard. So it would allow free flow of the water even during the worst-case hundred-year flood. So here's the area that I've identified for access onto the property. If you look to the left, it's this area circled in yellow, which is very close to the Oaks entrance. And to the right is conceptually what I submitted to Caltrans for their feedback to see if it could support that left-hand turn lane. It might be a situation where reef striping is the only thing that would be required, but at this point, I'm not sure. I'm waiting to hear their feedback. You also see the crosswalk that I would like to add to 218, very similar to what you see on Fremont Avenue near the Turtle Bay Restaurant, where it's a zebra stripe crosswalk that has flashing lights as you walk across it. These blue lines here represent the area that would gain access onto the property. And like I said, this point right here is the closest, one of the closest, to 218, which minimizes disruption of vegetation in this particular area. And then in the lower left-hand portion is a precast box culvert. That's the type that, like I said, already exists within the area. My experience, I'm a retired military officer with twenty-eight years of service. I have a background in engineering, and an engineering degree as well as an MBA. I've spent my entire career leading people, managing operations, and coordinating logistics. And I honestly believe those are the skills that are going to be required to be successful with this proposal. After I retired, and I was looking for my next challenge with that background in engineering, I've always been interested in building and creating things, so I decided to take the challenge of build my house here in Delray Oaks from the ground up. Now, I know Mr. Roscoe and other developers could put up a picture of things that they developed that is much bigger and just as nice as this, I know that, but I poured my heart and soul into this. It took me two years, and it became my job. And I immersed myself into the process so I could understand how it worked and understand the systems and what was required to build a house from the ground up. I learned a lot, but I also gained the confidence that I know I have to complete this project. So in conclusion, there have been previous attempts to develop this property. If you look back twenty, thirty years ago, a lot of residents here might remember, there have been at least two or three failed attempts at this property. And all of them were very large in size and scale. What I'm concerned about is that we will follow the same failed path of the past and expect a different result. My proposal preserves the green space as I outlined and only develops one percent of the entire parcel. It creates that connective tissue that can bring the separate areas of the city together, and it provides a financial benefit to the city in the form of a purchase price and ongoing occupancy and sales tax revenue. Now, everybody in this room knows that I can't bring the amount of money that a large development would bring. But you can't have it both ways. You can't repeat development and expect someone to take a modest approach like I'm now lying to this proposal. City also gains a locally owned business by a Delray Oaks resident that's committed to the city, listening to hear and listening to what you have to say and implementing it. And I'm very passionate about the prospect of completing this project, and I really hope you give me the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson, thank you very much. Please don't clap very much at once. It's my job as the chair to keep control. If we have certain individuals that can't behave well, I'll do a jury for ten or fifteen minutes, will come back and keep a jury. It's getting late, and I'd like everybody to go home. So let's try to be efficient and play by the rules. This is my job to make sure we play by the rules. Okay, we'll start off with the city council first. Got any questions or comments? Questions by, yes?
Another question, like where it says the maximum occupancy for this room. What would be the maximum occupancy for the lodge?
Well, it's conceptual at this point, but doing some rough estimates of it, depending on the configuration, and that's a big aspect of how many you can fit in or how it's configured and how it's going to be used, it can range anywhere from forty to seventy people, is what I estimate.
Includes the county ownership?
Yes. And that's by design because I don't want it to be big. I want it to be a venue that would accommodate a group of people within that range.
Would there be facilities for cooking, like the kitchen and so on, in the barn?
Yes, not for cooking, but to accommodate catering or food service that would come to support whatever event would be held out there.
Okay, so then on your exterior where there's the tables and all, people could bring a picnic lunch maybe in there?
Absolutely.
But there would be no facilities for purchasing any food then?
I would like to have a facility, a small food cart or a food stand where I could provide beverages and pre-made sandwiches, for example, and snacks, that type of thing that residents or anyone using the trails could purchase and relax and enjoy on-site.
Thank you.
Okay, yes. So what's your motivation for doing this? You're not out there to make a lot of money, it sounds like, just to make it look pretty for the Delray Oaks.
I appreciate that question, and absolutely, it's not a huge moneymaker. There's no question about that. And, you know, when I retired from the military, I was looking for my next purpose, and I honestly, in my heart, wanted to do something nice for Delray Oaks. And I saw this as a potential opportunity, and that is my sole motivation.
Other questions by councilmen?
Okay, for me, two things. Number one, I like the idea of the barn, our historical tie-in. I moved here back in fifty-seven, the barn was still there. There was also the archery field out there, to be able to go around and shoot arrows at different targets all over the place, so that sort of fell apart there. I guess the main question I've got is, the home you built, any way of materializing that?
(laughter)
You said you'd just build something to eat and do, that's what happens. Somehow I'd do the great job you did. That's more of a joke than anything else.
I plan to bring the same level of quality to this area. I mean, I want to make it nice, just like my house. I want it to be something nice for Delray Oaks. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go off to the public. It is getting late. If the people who'd like to make comments or ask questions, you might have some time. It's right, you have every right to speak. Try and be succinct, make your point, and then let somebody else get out there so you get home before midnight tonight. Thank you. First speaker, please.
Allison Kerr again. And I was asked, shall we deliver in support of Scott's proposal from the Delray Oaks to the Delray Oaks City Council? At the last round of the meeting, my letter was read, and which expressed my absolute dismay on learning of the development of the property across from my condo at the Oaks. However, I may represent in favor of the plan presented by Scott Donaldson. It's clearly clear that this is a dear part of his plan to benefit the community, the residents of Delray Oaks. This is a thoughtful plan that in a way disrupts the natural scenery and beauty of the seventeen acre plot of land that offers new benefits assets and works for our community. I encourage all residents who see these merits in Scott's plans to rally behind him. Likewise, I urge no by the seat. The decision made was to look beyond the dollar signs and truly fundamentally give this thesis with a lasting treasure it could and should be for our city. Scott absolutely and genuinely has this vision, respectfully, Judith Betler. Mayor, you mentioned that the Roscoe proposal was somewhere to be viewed.
There is a proposal, a third one originally.
Is it online somewhere?
No, it's a confidential, negotiated.
Oh, excuse me, I misunderstood. And then the only comment I have is I would like to see the land that, if it goes back to the city or state, so the city directly donated to a nonprofit rather than being mitigated against any other environmental policy.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
My name is Stero, I live in Delray Oaks. The two judgments proposal wants to develop exactly where you look out the window, and I'm sure it does have some effect in the view, and also the, from a personal perspective, the value of the property that it produces, and I'm sure everybody else is, to a greater or lesser extent. And from what I've heard, it seems as if there's other places where there's a lot more development that can be accomplished. And I don't know whether the revenue that we'll bring in from this development proposal is worth the, your time and everybody's, how would you say, value to what they have been living. And so I don't know if, what it looks like from having some small houses or cabins or hotels, it seems nice to have places where you can go to dine or eat or walk, but it doesn't seem to be valuable.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
George, yeah. I have a personal problem with one of your slides. You showed the forest down at the bottom, the north side and the south side. That should be, the south side should be a good side. (laughter)
You got that backwards there?
No, no, it's the good side.
Is there any possibility of putting up the slide that you had with the walkway and the twiki? No, no, the other one, earlier on. Right there, right there. Thank you. You have the issue of traffic. You have General Moore on one side, the west. Down below, you have Sixty-Eight and Prairie Team. I don't know if anybody have you been to Luthen Beach, but I recall when I went to Luthen Beach, you had to get the pole, the flag, crossed. Sometimes you make it, sometimes you don't.[1517.01][1517.01](laughter) You would have to put in a stoplight. And to have the stoplight in the middle there, what after, you could create a lot of traffic, particularly if you have buses or you have bellwicks. I think, neither way, sir, I want to commend you for twenty-eight years. I think it's refreshing to look at this, and I have another question about the barn. It would be nice to have the back of the barn, some type of situation that might like it, kind of be interesting. But also going into your property, I'm wondering how this B site and fire department would have a question about that, the feasibility of going into there and trying to turn it around, and also parking further on the side to be cars. So I'll just keep that short if you want to go.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Susan Rexfield, Colonel, at Carlton Drive. This development is exactly the kind of development that I would love to see in Delray Oaks. I'm totally a favorite everywhere except for the crosswalk going across 218. As a bike rider, that's going to be horribly dangerous. So I don't know if it needs to be able to fix that situation, but otherwise, I think it's awesome.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
I just have a simple question. Mr. Roscoe says he has enough water for almost two hundred buildings or two hundred apartments or rooms. Mr. Donaldson, yes. Says he only has enough water for five or six of the cabins. I don't understand what happened there, what's the difference?
Just briefly, sir. So the one proposal counts on onsite well water, which is Mr. Donaldson's, and that's much less water. Mr. Roscoe's proposal brings water to, the credits that he has to the project, which allows more intensive development. Next speaker, please.
Okay, Carol Rojas again. And I'm wondering about the feasibility of having a very small type cafe at the barn, maybe breakfasts and lunches, which would give the city more money, make the council happy, and might help the proposal get through.
Absolutely. If I could address that?
Yes, please.
That actually is my long-term vision, is to potentially turn the barn into a restaurant, offering simple items and a rustic environment. So that is something that I would like to move towards, but I know that's a ways down the road, but it is on my mind.
Any other public comment, any questions? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mike Simmons for Told Drive. I had no idea what to expect tonight, but it's been pretty cool. First of all, thank you. I think the idea of sending a note in the mail, which I received, is a great idea. That's fantastic. And I guess predictably, the pretty traditional proposal, and one that's quite opposite, very untraditional. But I'm pretty excited about this most recent proposal, and it'd be something pretty fun and real spectacular. And it'd be also nice for the Mr. Donaldson to have a project that would have him involved in maybe.
Go away.
(laughter) Very inspired by Scott's work.
I know Mr. Donaldson likes that to ask. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mark Ellis again. And a quick question disposed for the council and project is, it might entail expanding the access and the parking. it might entail expanding the access and the parking, but it would be, I think, an interesting concept to consider the Delray Oaks farmer's market location.
Thank you, sir. You and the vice mayor, if you'd like. If you have a conversation with various officials or have questions, that we will eventually work you on. Any other public comments or questions?
That's pretty nice, I probably got it. I know the previous thing you're talking about is development on the forward portion of Delray Oaks. It's like expanding our city by equal to the size we have now. And I just think this proposal here would make a very nice segue from the two sides of town that people and bodies have.
Yeah, Mr. Donaldson also mentioned foretag. Even one of the projects, four trails and greenways. Our city manager's working on an extensive trail network that connects the entire, the old Fordland lands through Delray Oaks. Delray Oaks would be a major key. Stay tuned for that. It's very, very exciting to say the least. But that's beyond this, this present day. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, saying no, we'll go back to council. Last minute, questions or comments by council?
I didn't hear anything about beer garden. I'm just sort of with a beer garden. My development team is working on it.
Okay, with the council, I propose we direct staff to set up a panel to review the proposals, return to council on open session with their analysis and recommendation on the way ahead. If the council would agree to that, I think that's probably our next step. Comments? Okay, I hear a game motion, matter of fact. Okay, ladies first. All discussion, all the papers, you can all say hi. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for showing up. We'll be doing this for any other projects. And stay tuned for more exciting developments in the neighborhood of Delray Oaks.